Good afternoon, Bob Jeppert, Pelican Preserve. And we have a proposal that was passed by P-PAC and by the PONZ Work Group. It's before you tonight for a $40,000 per year expense. And I just wanted to elaborate a little, Lois, because it's been a struggle for us, and I know for your communities. In the past, the recent past 11 years, we have had no less than six different firms attempt to clean our piping and our catch basins and mitered end sections. Between Morris Riley, Aquagenics, Shenandoah, Metower, Extreme Divers, and Sewer Viewer. The majority of the attempts have been less than satisfying. And mainly because of our methodologies and our ignorance in how to go about doing this. We tried cleaning based on pipe size and length. We tried cleaning based on percent of debris that was removed. We've tried doing it on time. We've tried a number of things. And as I said, the result has been successful in that we've had our pipes cleaned. And they are still clean. But we're not, we weren't fulfilled in the approach that we took because we always kind of felt like we were paying too much money. So what we are proposing today is, I think it was kind of modified on what Stony Brook did. But we are now going to, we are now proposing that the board accept the fact that we are going to inspect every catch basin, mitered end section, and head wall once a year. And that inspection is going to yield a work product that'll tell us they're 20%, 30%, 30%, 30%, absolutely clean, or whatever. And then from that database each year, we'll make decisions on what we want to clean. And we've tried this approach before. We generally set our threshold was 25% before we would approach cleaning. But it's been a kind of a tricky program for us. As we stand here tonight, we are looking at 460 catch basins within Pelican and 209 head walls, mitered end sections, or flare end sections. So I don't know if there's going to be any questions when it comes up as an item, but I thought I would just stand here and field any questions that we might have. I mean, we've done things in the past, and I'm happy to say that when we cleaned it about four years ago. And then last year, just before the hurricane, we did a random 30% inspection, which was our plan all along. And we were still 95% clean. So that worked out well, at least answering residents' concerns, will be flooding because we're dirty? And the answer to that was absolutely not.
And you had, and let me ask just, I believe when you stepped up, you said $40,000?
I think that's what it meant.
And it was, I've got, I've got a proposal here for 20, so I just wanted to make sure...
Well, I just, I just got back in town. I grabbed this as I ran out. And well, maybe 20, I don't know, but it might be one for one thing and one for another. I just don't remember. So I'll cover myself and say not to exceed 40. We're going to go for the, we're going to go for the cheapest.
Okay.
Whatever we have in our proposal, Chris, is correct. It may not be correct in my notes.
Okay.
I think it's DEP, but one of the agents, I think it's DEP, on their MS4 program has a suggestion that a utility would do 10% per year. So you've gone very aggressive doing that. My question is, have you guys identified all of your stuff to where you're doing X 1 through 20 in year 1, 21 through 40 in year 2? Have you, have you...
That was our, that was our approach prior to this. And in 2000, this is 18, 2016, '17, we did 30% again, a re-inspection. Prior to Cypress Grove, we've inspected everything in Pelican. That was all done.
The, the other one is, is that, and I understand your dilemma on taking bids on this, this, I've had contractors tell me, "You write the King's English any way you want it, and I'll tell you how I'm going to bid it."
Well, the shift in methodology, the shift in methodology, to really answer your question was, when we did our 30%, we put cameras in pipes.
That was my question.
Okay. We're not going to, we don't envision doing that. We didn't, we don't think we really got the benefit for the buck. They did it. We spent money for it. But we went from point A to point B, and if point A wasn't dirty, getting to point B wasn't dirty.
So your point is, is the post-construction...
Now we're, now we're focusing on the areas that will get dirty and will require. And we're saying to ourselves, "Well, at least out the gate, why not do them all a year?" Because it's relatively inexpensive.
But I've heard the same thing said, that what I like to do is to have a gotcha and indicate that we will do a random post-construction inspection. And then that way, he doesn't know where I'm going to do it or when I'm going to do it. That way, they have to stay honest and clean the segment. They just can't go whistling through it and leave 20% of the...
Well, we're only talking inspection. We're not talking about cleaning.
I'm talking about, I'm sorry.
We're only talking inspection, not cleaning.
I understand that, but after you clean...
Then we'll hire somebody to inspect, and we'll probably go back and check their work.
But that's 100%?
That's 100% of what we identify as needing cleaning. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
And Bob, just to be clear, you're, Pelican's looking to do this inspection annually?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's pretty easy to do. If you're, if you're just going out to the catch basin, maybe it's four feet, maybe it's six feet, whatever, what percent of debris is in there? We get them important, we say, "Okay, we know which catch basins we got to clean."
And I'm just curious, and you can ballpark this. Based on the, the different vendor engagements that you've had out, if you could say, and if you could compare apples to apples, what's the variance on the, on the cost?
Boy, it's, it's, there is no way to rationally...
Five to one?
There is no way, I mean, we, we tried initially to bid on percent of debris they removed, which was great for us. But then you got a guy that goes out and he does 30 pipes and they're all clean, he gets nothing. You know, something wrong. So that one didn't work.
Well, they'll turn around and they'll hit you with mobilization costs on the bid that'll knock your socks off.
Well, we, again, we've tried a number of methodology, mainly out of our own ignorance. We weren't sure what we were looking for.
And the only reason, the reason why I was asking, I was just curious about what, what's the, the best way to move forward as far as, you know, long-term contracting?
Yeah. I might be up here a year from now changing this, I don't know. But right now, this looks like, this looks like a viable strategy.
It passes a smell test.
We'll have, we'll have to see.
Thanks.
And we have budgeted money for it.
Since we've got Bob up here and he's discussed it, do you want to go ahead and have a vote on item 5A?
We have approval, item 5A, Madam Chairman.
Did we get a verification of the, the number, was it 20 or 40?
Whatever's in the book is what the number is.
20,000.
20,000, 17.
So I've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I second it.
I did.
Thank you. That passes.
And, and that was a bid, that was, that 20,000 was, was the lowest bid?
There was not, we did not put it out for bid.
Not required.
What's our limitation on that?
Internally, it's 50,000. Statutory, much higher.
Is that a problem, or are we all right?
No, sir.
Yeah.
Unless you want me to say it's a problem.
No, 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 no. I mean, I really wouldn't have cared. I could get 15 people to do it, I didn't care. I just wanted to get, get somebody that I knew would do this part of it. They're the people that did it after Irma. Now, for the, after Irma, we did a limited area, it was 68,000, but they cleaned also.
You got your proposal.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us, oh.
I have just one little question.
Go ahead.
Are we supposed to approve the 5D? Or are we supposed to make a motion?
It was just, it was just a discussion.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask.
This was under action, that's why.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. Yeah, it does say consideration of acceptance of the financial audit. Are we prepared to make a motion for that?
We need to accept the audit?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Flaherty.
Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, might as well, since he's coming and gone.
So I'll make a motion to approve the...
Or accept it.
I'm sorry, accept the financial audit delivered by...
Jake.
What was the...
Jake Gaines or Burger Toon?
Zelen Gaines and Frank.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on acceptance of the financial audit for a year ended September 3rd, 2017. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes also. All right. I'm going to go...
Real quick question, when do we retain the firm to do the audit for 2018?
I would imagine after the fiscal year ends, correct?
I think you might still have one more year left on.
It was a multi-year agreement?
Yeah, it was a multi-year.
We've got the contract spreadsheet in front of us, so that's the next item up for acceptance, so it'll be there.
Year three is August of 2018.
So it expires this year.
So that means he does the 2018 included, or he's done?
Maybe that he's done because it was entered into in '15. That would have been for fiscal year, well, we have to double.
Yeah.
15, 16, 17, 18. So Stephen, we may want to crank up the auditor selection process.
Yeah.
Soon. Thank you.
He's got 12 months to get it done.
Do anybody have any questions on the contract spreadsheet consent items 3A?
Yeah, I did.
Go ahead.
It's, the service is cleaning that expires on the 26th of this month.
The one right up above it?
Yes, if it's terminated.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, are you getting another?
Look, look up above it, the line up, item above it.
Oh, that's the clean, okay, that's the same thing, the same cleaning administration building? Okay. Because it's, this is cleaning. I didn't know what cleaning was. Thank you.
Motion to accept the contract spreadsheet, item 3A.
Subwoo.
Second, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Danny, I have a motion and a second, accept consent agenda, item 3A. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. We are moving right along. 4A, building options.
I will address this item. It's really for informational purposes. We brought back some hard, hard costs when we were looking at building expansions. And we laid out the costs identified with each of those options, you know, per square foot, the site development. And basically, if you're looking into a permanent structure up by the commons area that you'd like to build, you're looking about 187, 50 square foot. We, we went with just a 21, 50 square foot building, and then site development costs. And it's a lot higher up in that area because there is no existing stormwater system, there are no existing utilities where there are ours. And then we looked at a pre-engineered building that we could bring in, and then also a modular on-site here. And those site development costs are quite lower, simply because everything's available right here, electric, utility service. And we also had additional funds for the modulators for furniture, IT, the site prep, and our own utility connection fees.
Any questions for Mr. Shoemaker on this?
We talked to Girl Scout, and we went there because it was there. And that was what, 3,900 square feet, 4,000, something like that? Is this 21, 50? Have we done a plot, done a plan, projected out? And if so, for how many years to verify that 21, 50 meets our need?
That's really just staffing for gateway, et cetera, and projected six positions that we would add over the time. And it would not be like if we went up to the commons, if we wanted to add additional space for, say, a rec room, an HOA meeting room, or some ancillary facilities. And also, you know, if you're up there at the same time, do you want to do bocce ball, pickleball, and those other amenities?
Well, I guess my point was is that will 21, 50 last us, we're going to find, fund this thing, going to guess, what, 20-year financing? Will this building supply our needs for 20 years? Because we got things that we talked about that, in my opinion, this, this wouldn't touch it with a 10-foot pole. When you start talking about buying lawn mowing equipment, boats, spray irrigation equipment, all that other stuff, yeah, I could see 21, 50 being doubled or tripled. So I guess this is purely, and we have knowledge of and recognize, that this is just a staffing-related expansion, period. Not, not any of the other utility components, not storing, what do you call it, generators, not storing tractors, not storing any of the equipment that we've got outside that should probably be inside. It doesn't address that.
No. And basically, that would be office, office, you know, on a modular, we're looking at on this property. And we would assume some extra room for some of those facilities if you did have that future storage facility, so we could move the boats and trailers and that off the property.
And the modular is a purchase, not a lease?
Correct.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My recollection of past conversations with the board is that three or four of us, including myself, would like to see a more realistic depiction of what we could do at the, I'm going to call it the, the pool area. I think that sometimes you get once-in-a-lifetime opportunities to make decisions that you have to live with for a long, long, long time. And if, if there was an opportunity to construct a building that we could use, to be proud of, that we could use for our administration, management, it would also be available for the homeowners associations to meet without disturbing the rest of the staff or keeping them here on an overtime basis. It would have adequate parking and possible amenities such as pickleball around. I think that we ought to take an educated look at it. And therefore, I would be very much in favor of authorizing management to have an architectural firm draw up a building that has some expansion possibilities, commensurate with the size that Gateway is looking at for the future, including the things that I just mentioned. And so that we, and also do some, what I used to call site borings, is what I used to call it. I don't know if it's another new term now.
Subsurface exploration.
What's that?
Subsurface exploration.
I should have known it would be something different. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to consider building on a piece of ground that's going to sink, sink on you. But I'd, I'd just love to see what's possible in that area with a realistic cost of what it's going to be, and whether or not it's feasible to finance it with, say, a 20-year bond.
And Sarah, we have in the last couple of weeks contacted three firms about preliminary, and we're getting costs on that now, too. And we have not, you know, moved forward because when you get involved with an architect and that, I want to bring it back to the board, because, you know, then you're looking at 20, $25,000, just to put something like that.
We're talking preliminary.
Right.
But if you go to that, you're probably going to be popping the 4,000 square feet, which I think we had justification for. You just hit a million dollars cost at that site.
Correct.
You just popped a million dollars.
And what we may end up having to do is complying with the Consultants' Competitive Negotiation Act because we would be, we would be requesting professional architectural services for a project, the cost of which would exceed $325,000. And then you have to go through that formal RFQ process to rank, select, and negotiate with the architectural firm.
Even for preliminary, not designed?
Yes, it just says, "Educational and professional services must be purchased for a project, the basic construction cost of which is estimated by the agency to exceed the threshold amount provided in the statute," which is in 325 for category five. And now, unless you characterize it as a study activity or a planning activity. If it's a planning or study activity, you have greater latitude.
I think, I think that's what I would do.
Yeah. Okay, then you're fine, because the most you can spend is $35,000 then.
We just want to see something, you know, that has...
Sketches.
The flagpole, and the birds flying, and the clouds, and everything.
I can do that, but you won't recognize a darn thing on there, Mr. Guy. No, I understand, if we characterize it as a planning or studying activity, including estimated cost, then we, under 35,000, it's fine to negotiate informally.
Sure, we solicited that as a conceptual plan.
Planning, planning, a planning and study.
If you're going to do that, I would do, say, do the same thing on this site, so that we have a comparison of apples and apples.
My only concern with that is, and we're kind of, you know, stuck, we're going to catch 22. We need something immediately to be able to relieve staff of being on top of each other. So the $68 a square foot for a modular building out here, which Chris has brought to us before, and then we started thinking about our other sites, was really where this whole idea started. And if we'd go to build something with the plans and the architect and the funding at the other site, that's not something we can...
Year and a half.
That's not something we can do quickly.
Year and a half.
So I'm, I'm still very much in favor of bringing a modular building onto this site so we can relieve staff, they get more space, and we need to add, we're talking about adding positions, and they can't do it, there's no place to put them.
What's the two-year lease for the modular building?
I'd have to look at the cost.
What if you do a two-year lease on the modular building?
Yeah, let's take a, when we looked at that, too, we got a lease price on it, and it was about 20% less than outright purchase. It was almost amazing how close.
Sort of like buying a car, isn't it?
Well, it was about that when I looked at it, so we might as well buy it, because you could reuse it or sell it.
So I think, since I've been on the board, I think what our approach has been in the reorganization within staff, the transition from some functions from seven-trent in-house, is to build a scalable organizational entity, at least with the ability for scalability, for future growth, and, and to be able to manage some components that we've outsourced in-house. So for me, when, even if, even if we do all agree that putting something over at the commons pool would be the best path, we're still going to be a couple of years out. I don't think, one of the things we don't necessarily do well is expedite items. So I, I still think, even if we were to start planning today, I think we're probably at least two years out from planning and approval and until a shovel gets stuck in the dirt. We're probably more likely than three years. So I, I like the idea of going with, you know, a temporary structure or modular base, whatever you want to call, that's cost-effective, so we can make sure we've got adequate facilities for staff. I think, hopefully, maybe Danny and district have an update on the, on the storage facility. But as soon as that gets developed and, and we move that, that's going to start generating revenue, probably after year one, positive revenue of upwards of 70, $80,000, maybe it might be year two. But which would open up the space here for us to...
Come back to rental?
Yeah. Which would open up the space here for us to consider equipment and utilities and things of that nature. So I think my personal opinion is, I'd love for us to get staff into something so we can create an environment where people want to work here, and they can be efficient, and we've got the right facilities to, to facilitate that. And then let's look at opportunities for us to, to build on the commons pool area. And I think that space has been vacant for a long time. But we do have some other competing priorities from a funding perspective. So we have to balance all these things. So I, I would be definitely in favor of looking at our long-term approach, possibilities, options with the, with the building. But I think we do have to, to move forward on short-term, whether that's lease or purchase, whatever is most cost-effective. But I still think it's a two- to three-year plan for me. I'm sorry.
I'm going to show my ignorance here before long, but are we sure that we want to be serious about a modular building in a hurricane season?
Just change the address.
Say again?
Change the address where it lands.
Okay. And maybe you all think for me, it's whatever is the most appropriate building to put back here. But I think the point I'm trying to get across is, we, we need to...
We need to give staff a lease.
We need, we need something for staff to be in. But at the same time, it, it should be a smart investment of those dollars. Not necessarily, I wouldn't think of it as a throwaway necessarily, but an interim solution. That's why, whether it's modular, whether we lease it, whether we buy it, whatever makes the most sense at that time. But I think that's something we really need to pull the trigger on and, and get moving.
And modular buildings are used for classrooms, when they expand schools, and they put classrooms in them. So I'm sure that they're well-prepared to make it as hurricane-proof as they possibly can. Because those buildings that I know of, I've never heard of any of them collapsing or blowing away.
The elementary school's got modular buildings, classrooms right next door.
The middle is 20 years.
And what I can do is, next meeting, I will bring you contracts and hard numbers for lease, purchase, and also for the planning study for the commons.
And to Bill's point, if you can get some, some disaster specs, I'm sure they, they're in Florida, so I'm sure they've got some information, so we can feel good about putting something in the back that's not going to be blown over and destroy what's in front of it.
And there wasn't, there wasn't a limitation of size on this site? For some reason, I, in the back of my mind, when those guys that were here about two months ago, I could have swore, somebody said something about a size of a building that the maximum that we could put here.
9,000 square feet.
And it can't, it couldn't attach. But I think the, the size that you're looking at, Chris, is really based on, we have a, I think you pointed out, there's a nice spot to place it, so it's kind of working in within existing...
That 9,000, it's additional 9 or cumulative 9?
Cumulative.
Cumulative 9. So we're six now, so we could only add 3,000 on a, whether it's a modular or a permanent building on this side, three's in. That changes things, too. Because if you wanted to put anything in the way of community stuff here...
No, you couldn't.
Three ain't going to get it.
No.
So that might have an impact.
Yes, sir.
I didn't vote in favor of it, but I have a pretty definite recollection that it's been a good, long time since we decided to build a yacht park down there.
A yacht park?
The storage, yeah, the storage facility.
And moved all of those things. And I don't see a blasted thing happening, which makes me...
We're waiting on a payment.
Waiting on a permit.
We have a permit issue.
Danny's going to be updating us on that shortly.
Thank you, Madam.
But if that would happen, like Doug said, that's $82,000 that would go a pretty good ways towards paying for that interim building, if, even if you rented it such that turnaround, and if you can sell it to somebody else, then that's just all gravy.
The school.
School, yeah.
With that, with that question asked, Danny, are you prepared to answer where our permit is on our storage lot?
Yeah, we have, we have the landscape plans. We have drawings into CAD for the modifications on the stormwater. As soon as we're done with that, we'll be able to submit it for the ERP. On the DO side with the county, the two items that were out there were landscaping, which we have now. And then they have one requirement, if we want to fight it, we can fight it, or else we can, we can add it. They had a requirement to have fire hydrants. I don't know if you really want fire hydrants there, it wasn't part of any plan that we had before, but right now, they're, they're requiring it. So we would have to fight it if we didn't want it. The other option is to put fire hydrants out there.
How much does that add to the...
Well, we'd have to extend, we'd have to extend the pipe, we'd have to add, I think it's a couple of hydrants. I'd have to see for sure how many. It's based on spacing, have to be spaced.
We don't have a hydrant within 500 feet on the wastewater treatment plant site?
No, we'd have to, so, we'd have to add at least, at least one. But you've got to extend the pipe. I mean, it's not a big deal for us to, you know, to do that, and that would be the quickest thing. The other option is, again, to, you know, to fight it.
Do you know, where's, where's the closest hydrant, right?
Right here on the deal, I think. Across the street, right on David Griffin Drive.
What, what was that?
The wastewater plant has three hydrants, and OAK next to it has a hydrant in it. They're all four American darlings.
So we would, we would probably be adding one hydrant, so it's, I mean, it's not a huge deal, but...
But would you tie off of that main?
Yeah, we could just extend, we could just extend off of that.
So ballpark, what's the dollar value of the hydrant and the pipe?
Hydrant's probably about $4,000, $5,000 now. And then the caustics, it just depends on the length to extend it.
So like 20,000?
Could be $20,000. I mean, we're, you know, looking at, the total project was not a huge, you know, project. it just keeps growing when they're adding landscaping or adding all of these things. So, that would be the easiest thing, it would provide you some protection of the...
If we want to move fast, it's going to be the easiest, because otherwise, we're just going to fight those guys downtown.
Yeah.
Does that...
And still lose.
Does that impact any insurance costs, or is there any mitigation anywhere for us doing that? I mean, can we recover some of that?
Can we raise the price of the rent?
We can, I mean, we haven't set the price, so we can...
You've got a waiting list.
I can't imagine that any of the questions that any of your leases have regarding storage, that they're even asked if there's a hydrant with it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'd say include that in the deal, that $20,000 instead of screwing around with it if you want to move out on it.
Because we're losing revenue, I mean, every day that we don't have that bill.
So, with that said, like I said, we've got the drawings in there in CAD right now. I would say next week, we could probably resubmit both those.
That sounds great.
I'd go that way.
Yeah.
Danny answers your question right, Mr. Guy?
He does, thank you, ma'am.
And Danny, when, maybe Danny, for the next board meeting or whenever you can, can you present us with some kind of timeline?
Yeah, 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 I'll let you know what that process generally is and where we're sitting.
I'm talking total project kind of timeline, so once we go to these, when can we start?
Yeah, we want to go quick before this Timber Creek starts popping, because they just came up for a permit today that was in the paper, so they're moving along.
Yeah, because we want to start doing it before they...
Oh, yeah.
And then, Chris, just in line with that, we, I know we did some assessments around spaces and stuff, we'll probably need to resurrect that, just to see what current prices are.
Just getting an update on our cost estimate.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Danny. ADA was requested by our attorney.
This is advisory only, and I suggest we not have extensive discussion because it is a litigation matter.
We'll just listen.
Okay, thank you.
Is that translated, don't ask me questions?
Yeah, stay ahead, don't say anything.
If you want to, have prior conversations possibly later, if that's okay, one-on-one. There is a woman on the east coast of Florida in Boynton Beach named Anna Marie DeFeo, who has since April 25th of 2010 filed 99 lawsuits against private entities and community development districts alleging that those entities and community development districts are in violation of the American with Disabilities Act and the Rehabilitation Act by having websites that are not accessible to the blind and visually impaired. Gateway was one of the chosen CDDs. Stony Brook to the south, Fitters Creek 1, Fitters Creek 2, Lally Resort CDD, Colonial Country Club, and a whole bunch of others have been sued. The district's insurance carrier has retained counsel, a firm that's representing a number of the CDDs in this lawsuit, and Chris was served, I think, July 9th, so the law firm has until July 30th, 21 days after service, to file a response or a motion. What I have seen so far in these lawsuits, and basically the allegations are that we have a website, we are required to have certain data on the website, that website is not accessible to blind or visually impaired, there is software for it, there are guidelines out there, there's suggested approaches, et cetera, and it goes on and on. And the requested relief is injunction requiring compliance now and in the future, and payment of costs and attorney's fees for the one attorney who's filed the 99 lawsuits. And, like I said, the district's carrier has retained counsel. What I've seen is that typically a motion to dismiss will be filed alleging a number of items. Then there might be discussions between the plaintiff's attorney and the defendant's attorneys, which is apparently ongoing, and a discussion about a possible settlement. And the only reason I know of that is, there are motions to stay or abate or continue a number of these cases based upon the parties beginning entering into settlement discussions, and with the recognition that CDDs, in order to resolve a matter, have to have public hearings and meetings to address any settlement matters, and/or to have a closed-door session to discuss possible resolutions of it. So, the status is, right now, the district was sued, the district was served, the district notified the carrier, the carrier's retained counsel, they're on top of it, and we will keep you posted as necessary. Two of my districts, next Wednesday, the agenda items, Fitters Creek 1 and Fitters Creek 2, have on the agenda a request to hold an executive session, not next week, but it has to be a following time, in order to discuss whatever the settlement proposal is, and again, that's the insurance carrier's retained counsel is driving that. I've had a discussion with him, Chris Sterns, had a good pleasant conversation, and the voice found, dealing with the insurance carrier retained counsel, always very good to work with. Chris told him, we told him, Diane told him, anything they need, contact us, but just want to keep you apprised of that, because there may be a future closed-door session request, and there may be some future other items, and if you want to talk to me secondly, be glad to do that.
Madam Chairman, was this filed in federal district court?
Federal District Court, Southern District, and one of the questions always is, and if you want to have that answered discussion now, is, what standing does she have, what's the venue, what's the jurisdiction, because we are in the middle district of Florida, where Lee County is located, not the Southern District, but that's where the lawsuits have been filed, for all of the CDDs I've seen to date, in Lee and Cairo County.
Have you given thought to consolidating these?
I don't know if those defense counsel have or not, I don't know. One thing that might happen in the future, based upon some information I received from one of my other districts, is the retention of a consultant to advise on how to set up your website to make it ADA compliant, because you may have other people out there also that may try this, because this is just one person. Secondly, there are staff costs associated with, depending upon the volume and type of materials that you wish to place on your website, so there have been some recommendations I've seen to pare down substantially the materials available for the website in order to, from an expense, so that becomes this whole cost-benefit analysis issue. And also, I understand that in renewals of insurance policies for certain districts in the future, the carriers may require that you have a consultant on board and some certification that you're engaging in techniques to try to avoid any exposure liability. That's just sort of, I know it's an awful lot, and I apologize.
My interest is...
May I just, have you gotten ahold of the Florida Association of Special Districts?
No, they first brought this to our attention about three weeks ago. Mr. Crawford sent out an email blast saying, "A couple of folks have been sued, here's a memo from one law firm." Within about two days, I got a memo from another management company that represents a number of CDDs where they have about, six of their clients had been sued, with a list of recommended consultants to initially retain, to start some mitigation activities, and so they're very well aware of it.
How many other districts does our insurance carrier have that's in the same boat we're in? Are we the only one that's with our carrier?
What's the name of our carrier, Chris?
I don't know, off the top of my head, but there's a lot of chatter going on, we've been going through the last three weeks, talking to consultants, looking at costs, and that is the big thing, like Tony said, you know, we can start making it compliant, but a lot of that is historical data and minutes and budgets, the cost to go in and embed language and make those compliant is significant.
Well, where I was going is, is Joe DeCerbo's, he's high up in that other, not CDD deal, but special districts.
He's a target.
Are they next, that was my question, are they next? I might call this lady up and see if we can work a deal here.
No, for the record, Mr. Tinkle was tongue-in-cheek. Because, you know, once again, the legislature has mandated that special districts have websites, and there is a mandated, I'll call it de minimis amount of data or material needs to be on it, for example, our budget for a period of time, and certain other things, and there's a recommendation, and then, and part of, I'm sure, was what's the defense council carrier, and I may come forward before that, was a recommendation of, here's a list of what's mandated, here's what you have, and that may be all you may want to have. The unfortunate aspect of this is, by virtue of having, and a number of communities like Gateway, want to make it easier for the community to access the records and not have to, and also it's easier on staff, so that our public records are not bombarding and flooding the staff offices, and people don't have to pay for the 25 cents a page, or 15 cents a page, or the cost of retrieval, because the documents are available. And that's the unfortunate downside of this litigation, quite frankly, because a number of districts will be paring back substantially, as I understand it.
And they've had a few that have just shut their websites down.
Well, we're required to have one, that's the problem.
And Mr. DeCerbo's special district, but the FASD, and also the Louis Longman Walker, the legal firm for the special districts, did issue like a four-page memorandum on it, and it's also become a very hot topic with the county clerk of courts, because the county agencies have had similar issues.
Oh, they are, and it's interesting, FGCU has a whole page devoted to, and there's different applications, and there's a special format for the document, and again, way over my...
This was a law change that took place.
Well, part of it is, no, part of it is guidance from the Justice Department that really...
It's been ongoing thing for 10 years.
I'm sorry?
The increase for ADA regs is really been going on for 10 years, and there's different reg levels for different institutions and organizations.
And a number of private entities have been sued, when Dixie lost a big judgment last year in federal court. They've gone after Chico's, they've gone after, if you look at a number of private entities also. And if you want to, I can send you all a copy of the complaint, or Chris can, just so you can see what, and Chris, you may want to, when the motion to dismiss comes in, just send it out to the board.
Yeah, we'll send the legal memorandum, and also some of the information we found. We viewed a webinar on it yesterday too, so it's a very hot topic right at the moment.
It is, it is indeed. Okay, Tony, you'll keep us updated?
Yes, Chris, I will, absolutely, it's just, it's amazing.
Okay, that gives us 5B water level monitoring equipment.
Sorry, and I will also address this, we had discussions about putting in water level monitoring equipment in nine locations throughout the district. Also, Pelican has asked for some additional lake monitoring over there, and this is information from a couple of weeks ago, and since that time, we've had the proposals revised, and the pricing from the two that we have is basically at $60,000 and $51,000 for very similar product, very similar equipment. And I've been talking to the vendors, and one vendor out of Jacksonville asked them for references in Florida, and he sent me one from California, and then said they also do work with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, they have about eight coastal monitoring stations that they handle, and they're out of Jacksonville. And the other firm that we got the little higher bid from, at about $60,000, they have an office in Lakeland, and they also do all the work for Collier County and the Lehigh District. And I went over and visited with the staff over at Lehigh, because they have about 66 of these monitoring stations in place, and they also have, they can go from their cell phones and control their gates and raise their wiers and control the whole system remotely, so I spent a few hours over there, I'm looking at their equipment, getting recommendations, spare parts, they're very impressed with the equipment, they said it's robust, they replaced some of it that was 20 years old, and they keep it for spare because it's still functioning. We're looking at setting this infrared equipment up, nine different locations across the district, that would include four rain gauges, and it's basically starting to collect the data to do a stormwater management master plan and looking at managing the resource. And my recommendation, I usually would say go with the lower bidder, because the equipment is almost apples to apples, the fact that we have a vendor that works with two of our neighbors and is down here on a regular basis, I'm going to recommend we go with the higher bidder. And we also have a representative, sir?
62, sorry.
60. You'd like to come up? We have one of the vendors here today, he was out touring the sites with Mr. Tinkle.
Before that, just, Chris, are you recommending that the proposal by Hi-Sights is the more responsible company, that are most advantageous to the district?
Yes, sir. And just give me the quick, I'm trying to look here, what's the, we had three?
To 62 and 51 or something.
62 and 51, okay, great.
And I'm sorry, this wasn't an agenda item, but all this has been gelling in the past week.
Do you want, before John starts, to have a motion to accept, because I agree with everything you said.
I'd like to hear the board here, and he also has some of the equipment to show you what you gave them into.
Yeah, Chris and I talked about this yesterday, and I agreed with him, just from the description that he gave of the two companies.
What's the name of your firm, sir?
Hi-Sights Incorporated.
Hi-Sights.
H-I-G-H, F-I-G-H-T-S.
I don't have any direct questions for Hi-Sight, I think, Chris, you covered...
I looked at some of the sites, that's why I came down here today, to look at some of the weir structures and talk with Mr. Tinkle and Chris, and I've got a sample of some of the things there, a small box like that with a cellular modem in it, data logger, automatically will download to office computer, wherever you want it, or a couple of computers, depending on the license you want to get from Campbell Scientific, so we'll be here to give you everything that you need, made their quote as comprehensive as possible, so just work with you constantly, whatever you need.
The only issue that we came up with talking today on the going around, two issues, one, security, and for the most part, in our places, these boxes are going to be out on the weir, nobody's going to walk out there, in my opinion, I think it's pretty safe, we want to get them up high enough to where they're protected for the high water, which is not an issue, as we talked about. And then the other one that came up was lightning protection. Most of these are indeed out in the open, and John said there are some things that we can do to do, to try to ground these off, but for the most part, most of our sites are pretty easy, the only one to me that's a little bit complicated, yours, Stony Brook's a little complicated, because not so much to put it on there, it's how you get out to it during high tide.
We have a boat.
Well, we have a boat.
Damn, we have a boat. The second one is Pelican Reserves number weir 6, up on your north end, that's over on Pond 1, going back to Colonial, that structures, we're going to have to do something with that cast iron gate to get that removed and replaced to where we can get access in there, but everything else that we looked at today, unless you saw some additional ones, I think they're all right along with what John was anticipating, so, but I think an extra item could be the electrical protection in the event of a storm.
Well, if you're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to, I probably asked the same question.
If you work at Lehigh, we've...
Yeah, if you've got these units in Lehigh, has lightning strikes been an issue out there with the equipment?
Not as often as you'd think, they do have some lightning protection, we can have energy dissipators on it, but they haven't, they haven't had a lot of problems. Every couple of years, they may lose a unit, so, but we can help give you protection on that, and...
That's the lightning capital of the world.
Yeah, it is, it is.
And if I may, that's the cost of getting the equipment installed, but we are responsible for the cell cards for the connection, about $22 a site per month, so all that data is relayed back here through cell phone.
Yeah, the whole nine sites, they have their own cell unit, the data logger with the little antenna on it there is basically a cell, cell coverage system, that goes right anywhere from 144 a year up to maybe 192 if used, 250 megabytes of data, but, so, 1,300 or 1,700 per year for all of the cell bills together.
This would help us a lot in the fact that the stuff that I think Danny or Chris is going to report, that they had the meeting with South Florida Water Management District last week, and they did what we thought they were going to do, we're going to do hydraulic study, so this data will be able to use to calibrate the model, or the hydraulic model, so, I mean, the data that we're going to get for this, I'd love to add 20 years of this data, so that we wouldn't have to be screwing around with where we have problems and where we don't, because as I was telling John, and Bill, you well know, over Pelican Reserve, you guys can get a gully washer, and over here, dries a bone, and vice versa, we can get a gully washer and just dry over at Pelican Reserve. I mean, it's seven miles from one side of our district to the other side, so these rain gauges are going to have to be, we've estimated four gauges, to try to place them such that when we get data, several times Elle and I have gone out, and we wonder why the water is so high over in weir 2, and it's because you had a rain at Pelican, and we didn't have it over here, and so we have low flows and vice versa, so having that data will facilitate knowing and comparing that if we get a two-inch rain here, what impact does it have here, what happens over there downstream, an hour, 15 minutes later, two days later. So, it's going to help us a lot to fight our case with the county, to be able to make your two wiers in Pelican what we call permanent, and hopefully with some time, because John today, looking at wiers 4 and 5, came up with a great idea, take those wiers, if you're going to build two new ones, don't put that overflow and then have the gate right on the downstream side of it, move the thing over, put a square weir in it, and then have the sluice gate built. Move the thing over, put a square weir in it, and then have the sluice gate be a lot more, uh, meaningful. I don't think anybody thought about that thirty-one years ago when they did these. But, uh, he already came up with some ideas that on a new, permanent weir for Pelican, or for Pelican Reserve. Several options of way they can be done, it's a lot better than what we got. I was very pleased with the literature and everything else that John had.
Questions?
Not for you, for Steven, Steven Bloom. Where is this money gonna come off the budget?
I have one, one idea to get fifty thousand or fifty-two thousand of it. If you'd like to cancel Mr. Prezy's contract for the landscaping that's been in an abyss for eight months.
Don't say that twice, because I'll make that motion.
That's a good idea.
I don't even know what he's, I don't even know what he's supposed to be doing right now.
Well, I have two options. One is to move lines around in the general fund, if staff feels that they're comfortable doing that. Actually, I'll give you three options, just for today. The second option would be to use some reserves from the general fund. We talked a little bit about the cash reserves at the last meeting. And the third option would be to go to the capital project fund to use some reserves from there. So there's three, three different spots that you could board on.
All right, thank you.
I make the motion that we proceed with awarding the contract on the basis that it's the, all Tony's things, best.
Well, it's, the com, most competent, responsible, qualified proposer, most advantageous to the district, typical.
That's what I was thinking. Bid to Highsights Inc. in the amount of $62,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have ninety-five thousand in the, um, action?
We, that was, uh, Tom Price, and it was, in the action, that was, it could go up to, and like I said, those, those numbers have changed quite a bit in the last two weeks.
Thank you. Can you have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's, this is great.
Thank you.
This is a great start.
Can we start getting the feed off the weir readings tomorrow?
You're just gonna stand there tonight.
Thanks, John.
Madam Chair, if I may also follow up, I originally started speaking with the folks over at Lehigh at the FASD meeting about this. And I've been over with their shop, went out in the field, checked their installations. Another thing that came out of the conversations, and they're very willing to help and work with us and critique our installations, or come over and take a look at it. They've had a lot of, uh, experience with it. But, uh, we also are starting to develop a memorandum of understanding for assistance in case of a hurricane. Or any type, any type of action that we can work together. And, uh, there's not so much we can send their way, but if something did happen at Lehigh and didn't affect us, we do have a skilled utility team. We have generators, you know, wheel mounted, we have portable pumps and things like that. And of course, they have a myriad of equipment, things to help out. So I'm working with their director right now to put together a document like that, just so we have a formalized, uh, understanding agreement.
Mr. Craft?
Thank you. Can you generalize for me the size of the Lehigh? I've been over there a million times, but I don't know how big their, their unit is.
I think they have a hundred and thirty-three miles of canals in their drainage system there.
Do they flood?
They flood.
Yeah, they flood.
They were really underwater after.
And they're the highest point in the county.
And they, they also, what they're expanding, and they have a couple reservoir projects going on, and they actually sold all the dirt created, a burrow pit. You know, T dug the burrow pit out for them for their new reserve, and then they sold them the dirt on top of that.
One of their big problems that, that I've heard people complaining about over there is their canals are choked. Very similar to what you guys got coming out of, uh, Stony Brook. Just nobody's done anything for years. We got caught with our pants now with Irma.
They do their own mowing, their own mechanics, their own spraying, they have a few airboats, it's a, it's a big operation. They have thirty-three employees in that drainage district.
That's what I wanted to know. Where's it located?
Cross eighty-two.
From here?
In fact, all that drainage water from the new road projects going right there in that direction.
No, I mean their headquarters, where's their, where's their?
Off Lee Road.
Okay.
So I have a.
You mean the corner of Lee and Lee?
There you go out Lee, and then you make a left on County Lane, and it sits back there at the dead end.
Okay, thank you.
So, I want a point of clarity, um, and Chris, you had mentioned something about, you know, um, transit, uh, movement of funds from other priorities. If, if our district manager is in a position where there is an item that had been approved. If there is a lack of forward momentum or stall in that prioritization or priority, what authority does Chris have to?
It has to come back to the board.
So you, Chris would need to come back with a full.
That would be the best way.
Okay.
To, to move the line item, the money, move the line item.
And we'll bring that back at the next meeting along with the proposals for the building.
Yeah, and just by way of example, when it comes back, there's a statute that governs how you can do that. And it just says appropriations for expenditures within a fund may be decreased or increased by motion recorded in the minutes. If the total appropriation of the funds do not increase, you can establish procedures, uh, by which the budget operators may authorize it. If the total appropriation do not increase, so that gets back to, coming back to the board and record it in the minutes, but.
How did you have that ready?
Well, the discussion in the agenda packet about the audit, when they talked about not making the budget amendment within sixty days at the end of the fiscal year, that's fine.
Okay.
Psychic, psychic.
Psycho.
All right, I'm gonna move to item five C, that's Enterprise Fund review in fiscal year twenty-nineteen, approved tentative budget version two. Mr. Craft?
Yes, um, it's just kind of for your guys' discussion, uh, for the budget on, um, the four-hundred fund, Enterprise Fund. Not much has changed, it, total operating expenses didn't go up much from last year's budget. Really, the only difference is we broke, broke a couple of things out just for better tracking. Most importantly, the maintenance and repairs is, um, water, irrigation, wastewater. Worked with Kenny, and he kept it to one-fifty, it's just broken out in three different categories.
Quick question, Marney.
Go ahead.
I went through everything, and other than that, what we've already kind of kicked the can down on the road, and we've agreed to on that, seventy, twenty, ten deal. We'll let that kind of set for a while. The only thing I saw in here is that this capital improvement plan, Enterprise Fund, page thirty, does not appear to be the one, Chris, you and I had come up with after we added the items that were identified in that rate study for Mr., uh, I forget his name every time.
Daryl.
Daryl, was it Dewayne? He's gonna change his name. For Daryl, as, I don't, I thought I brought mine with me, but I, I can't find it. I thought I had some other items that were included, and they don't appear to be on this, and boy, they need to be in here. Because they're things that are going to happen, period.
And they were brought up for discussion at that board meeting, but there was no, you know, motion or anything to add them to the CIP.
What I would, we, we still got other shots at this, at the next meeting?
Enterprise, correct.
I'm sorry?
For this Enterprise.
Yeah, what I would like to do is to take and bring that next, I'm sorry, bring that other form, bring that forward, and then I'll make the motion at the next meeting.
Okay.
Or at least make, make the motion for a discussion, because there's things on there that have to happen.
Do you want to give me just a, for instance?
For instance, one, uh, parallel force main from down the FPL Eastman to provide, uh, storm sewer capacity in our pressure line to get it to here. And then the parallel line from, uh, out here at the soccer field road in Griffin Drive, all the way back to this wastewater treatment plant we proposed. I proposed a twenty-inch, I think Danny's people said maybe we could go to an eighteen or another sixteen. Right now, our Achilles heel in this entire sanitary sewer system is between that intersection, back there at the treatment plant, and out here. We have a break, we are up, you know what creek with, truly, without a paddle. That is the only way we get sewage to the plant.
Have you asked.
We got an Achilles heel there.
Have you asked our engineer to?
Yeah.
Refuse on that?
Yeah, yeah.
See things like that in writing.
We, we had it, if you recall, Bill, we had a, uh, I didn't call it a white paper, we had a discussion of those items, and wanted Danny to check it out. I don't know that we've answered that question. I think it needs to be, have Danny verify the validity of the things I had in there that would be on this list, and then we could just go down through each one of them. There's like six items.
Madam Chairman, did you order that, please?
I will indeed, I think this is the sheet you're talking about, Dan?
I don't, let, let me see. I didn't do anything this fancy or big, I can tell you that.
I think they're on there.
Yes, it is, yes, it is, this is it. Where'd you get that fancy big one? Blank.
I don't know.
We don't have any problem with that gal over there, we got already, it's in Braille right here. This is it. That's it. If we can have that for discussion at the next meeting along with maybe a report from Danny on each of the items that are on that, that are not on this list.
That's what I'd like.
Yep.
I agree.
Would you please? You and Chris please see to it that we get those.
Other than that, I didn't.
Want to copy this? Okay.
That's the meeting version.
Yeah, that's, I, I keep all my budget stuff together.
That's right. Other than that, I didn't have anything else. Chair.
Mrs. Flaherty, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
For Mr. Craft, go right ahead.
Okay, um, on the agenda item that you're increasing all these amounts to? Okay, in the, um, Enterprise Fund, is this correct?
Are you talking about the allocation of shit?
Yes. You're increasing, like, the payroll is going from, I think it was one thousand something to twenty-two hundred?
Should be going from nothing to twenty-two hundred, that's just incurred with paychecks, their processing fees, and the time and attendance. Those are all, so that's, those are all allocated to seventy, twenty, ten.
Okay, so these are all increases, and where are the, if these are increases, where are you gonna take this money from to balance it?
They've already, they're already in all of those funds, the general, Pelican, Enterprise. We've taken, this is just the allocation portion, this isn't just the Enterprise. And we've taken, we've eliminated some lines, we've added some things, these are just the main ones that we added that weren't in there before.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, following up on her question, is it not true that we have to approve this such that then we can give this to Daryl to start finalizing his work?
He, he already has that, because he's working on the connection fees, and we were trying to bring all those projects.
So with the exception of this capital, unless somebody else comes up with something, that would be the only surprise he gets, and he knows about that.
That has been sent down already, with those higher numbers.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, um, this is kind of a general statement to Mike, you, and, and Stephen. I, I think we would all agree that the things that are in the budget are things that need to get done. I mean, I think we've gone through prioritization, we've had multiple conversations. We could probably go and trim some of the things, but I, I think for the most part, we would just be prolonging expenditures or even increasing our risk. But when, when we had the budget discussion, uh, what was it, a month ago or whatever, first round? I remember Jim stood up and he presented some options, and it, it was the first time, I think, I had seen it. So I didn't have a whole lot of time to digest some of the things that, that he had proposed. Uh, and I did go back and, and look at it, and it, it kind of made me realize that when we go through and we do have increases like we have today, upwards of twenty-three percent, which is only, you know, I say only, but any increase to, to the residences is, it may not be favorable, but you're looking at about a hundred and some dollars. Have we thoroughly looked at alternatives or options to offset that increase? And I don't remember exactly, off the top of my head.
Keep in mind, a lot of the stuff that Jim had, and I agree with what he had, but was, uh, oh-oh-one, oh-oh-two related, not Enterprise.
No, and I'm just.
That's the difference.
And this is kind of a general statement, not, not, not necessarily to, to this, but, you know, I, I would love to see, before we went to final meeting. Is there, are there reasonable options that we could consider, whether it's transferring reserves or doing something else? Where we can offset that cost and not have to pull what I would consider priority-approved items from, from the budget? And that's why I really, we would lean on you, Stephen and Mike, for you guys to help bring those proposals, you know, to us. And I, that's one of the reasons why I asked the question about the reserves.
Yeah, those are.
On hand, so I'm not necessarily looking for an answer today, more or less, have we really looked at all the available options to try to offset some of this increase?
Or putting it the other way, can we have staff look at the recommendations, staff being Chris and, uh, Stephen and Mike? Look at what Jim threw out, because it's about the only one that I know that anybody's memorialized anything in writing of that nature, and say, pick it apart. I, I totally agree with the one. Use that cash reserve money, use that to the extent to knock off maybe as much as three-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred thousand dollars, and.
That's the one thing that stood out to me.
I mean, it, it stands out like a sore thumb, why not?
That's the one thing that I, I had not really thought about, um, in our process, and I don't know if, you know. So I just wanted to bring it out there before, before we get too late.
Comments on, on that report.
If it's feasible, and what, what implications does it have? I mean, you need to have X amount cash on hand, but I didn't know what it was.
And that's the other thing, is to make sure that we don't draw down our reserves to where, if we need to borrow for a capital project, we don't have the ability to do it, because we have to.
See, that depends on Enterprise or the other, big difference between those two.
It is, it is, so you have to be real careful when you're considering that. So, yeah, I don't mind hearing options, but.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. At our next meeting, can we make motions to change parts of the budget? Are we allowed to do that?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, can I talk about something in the capital improvement?
Yeah.
Or do we have to wait till next time?
Go right ahead.
My dog, the dog wash. Okay, I think that's a still thing from last year, that's still a liability, that we'll get mosquitoes and where they would grow, I think.
What is it, what are we talking about?
The dog wash.
And what is that?
A dog wash.
Dog, in the dog. I thought we took that out.
We did last year, but it was put in this year again.
Yeah, we can, we can take it out.
Do I need a motion?
Like a hosing off or a bath or what?
It's like a bath, it's like a bath.
Oh, with standing water?
We're talking about Enterprise Fund, that's not Enterprise.
But I did ask if it was capital improvement, if I could ask something.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant, okay, I thought we were just discussing Enterprise today.
But since I did ask if I could, I can wait till next time to make that motion.
I would agree, because I'm gonna have issues on the capital, on the.
Redoing the capital, so.
All right, so, and I can ask, make some motions about the general fund, too, at that time?
I believe the schedule we were going off of is the next meeting was all the CIP for both funds.
So I can't make a motion?
Say that again?
You can't, the schedule we were going off of, our next meeting was for CIP for both funds.
Huh, well, that'll work, good, then, we'll just kill them both, we'll have the stuff for the oh-oh-one, oh-oh-two fund, and we'll have the Enterprise, just do them all at once. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. But I do, I do want to also make one other comment, may I do that, please?
Go right ahead.
I want to thank Mr. Craft, because I've come in and asked so many questions, and he's been very helpful, and I really do appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Anything else from Mr. Craft?
Yeah, one, uh, this, this whole deal with the building is, can get real messy, real quick life. Because it's a shared cost. We need to have, and if I look on page thirty of this current Enterprise capital, and certainly we'll get talked about next meeting. Though we got in there for three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars as to twenty-nineteen estimate of the office building expansion. I hesitate to avoid bringing this up without a ruckus, but three-eighty-five is what percentage of X of the total cost that, how much of that's on the oh-oh-one, oh-oh-two, oh-oh-four accounts?
If I recall, it's one-sixty-five, oh-oh-one, three-eighty-five, three-eighty-five.
What I was looking for is the formula. So just, I, I don't need it now, just to have that as a discussion. But my point is, is that if we're going to do something else on a building, and we're going some other route, and Chris brings this at the next meeting. I think that discussion should be ahead of this, so that whatever your formula is, is we just plug in what the new number is and say, okay, Enterprise is gonna absorb X percent of four-hundred thousand, or whatever the number is, oh-oh-one gets this, and oh-oh-two gets this, and so we have it.
If I recall correctly, the CIP none goes to oh-oh-two, it's just seventy, thirty, thirty to oh-oh-one, seventy to that.
Now, what?
Thirty percent goes to the general fund, seventy percent.
What goes to oh-two?
Zero.
Zero?
It does not follow our normal seventy, twenty, ten, I'm not sure the reasoning behind.
I don't know why not, it would be seventy, twenty, ten, straight across, but we can talk about that next week. But what I'm getting to is, I would like to see, I love these, but I'd like to see. to see footnotes. How was it calculated?
That's what?
How was it calculated?
The 70-30?
We already decided how.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about busting the 70-20-10. Going there, got beat up on that last time. But what I am doing is, what does 70-20-10 apply to? And how do we calculate these? What I can do is, let me get it easy. I'll just go through it and I'll send you a copy of a highlighted one with footnotes of how'd you get this.
Okay.
Just do it easy.
Anything else from Mr. Kraft? Thank you. That brings us to our last item, which was added. That's 5E Karina.
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, if I may, if you recall, that as part of the transfer to the operating permit stage of the various permits that the district has are outstanding in Gateway for the Water Management System, there was one permit for, let's call it Karina Phase II Stormwater Management System. And that project initially had been reviewed, I think, and submitted for conveyance to the district by WCI back in 2014. At that time, Tetra Tech identified significant deficiencies, which continued to, 2018 continued today. Some were resolved, and the one that still remains is that the land, excuse me, lake maintenance easement falls below the control elevation, and at times is in the flowways, so it's a very narrow lake maintenance easement. And Tetra Tech came up with remedial suggestions. Lennar WCI has refused to do that. We were, we, the district, were under the gun, as we all know, to submit the transfer operating entity forms to South Florida Water Management District, even after, at that meeting that we held at their office. They were not of a mindset to hold off submitting any of them. And so the Karina Phase II, or Karina Phase II permit transfer operating entity was submitted along with the rest of them. Before that time, by the way, we had submit, we had submitted a letter to South Florida saying, hey, here's why we are not, we don't want to submit Karina Phase II. These are the deficiencies. They did not care. So the packet was submitted for the transfer operating entity form to South Florida Water Management District, followed up by correspondence with greater detail requesting, if you recall, in June of this year, requesting South Florida hold in advance, processing and approving the transfer operating entity form and the permit transfer for the Karina Phase II permit, and asking South Florida to require Lennar WCI to bring that flowway behind the various lots in Karina Phase II into compliance. We heard nothing from South Florida Water Management District until, in July 2nd of 2018, South Florida issued its permit transfer. And what we did not know was that there was an internal email between district staff or one staff member said, hey, we've been assured by the project engineer Waldrup that basically during the dry season, and Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, during the dry season, that can be accessed, there's plenty of room. And oh, by the way, the Gateway Services District can also work with the association, the Property Owners Association, to get an easement along the back, asserting that there's a drainage easement that we could utilize, which we disagree with.
So we have to go do it?
Well, yeah. And there's a 21-day clock that starts to work, and it's jurisdictional, to challenge a, the permit transfer. There's a notice of rights attached. That 21 days expires July 23rd, Monday. I've been working with, prepared a rough draft, or draft of the petition for a formal administrative hearing to contest that permit transfer, to request for his relief, to try, you know, to request the relief of requiring WCI to fix that, and to set aside the permit transfer. And that is something that I need your authorization to file. I don't know what the chance of success will be. If we proceed through this administrative process, it goes before administrative law judge with an administrative hearing. We follow the rules of civil procedure. There's discovery, there's depositions. We have our experts testify. They have their experts testify. The administrative law judge makes a recommended order to the South Florida Water Management District. They can accept or reject it. But that's the infinite, I mean, that's the litigation that kind of, it's a form of litigation.
Does this amount of firing a starburst over their bow?
Mike, I don't know. And once again, what I asked Danny to do today, you know, to come up with an estimated cost to remediate that situation. What would it cost to bring the fill in, I guess, basically, restore the slope that WCI has refused to do? But unless this petition for a formal administrative hearing is filed by this coming Monday, we've forever lost a chance. This is, I would recommend at least giving me the authorization to file the petition, and then we at least have created a placeholder, and whatever happens from there, whether or not we withdraw it at a later point, whether or not we engage in a settlement, whether we go to a full-blown administrative hearing, I cannot in good faith and good conscience advise you to not file it. And so you may want to ask public comment on this also, since it's a new added item.
Do a public comment after a motion.
Before, yeah, before vote's taken. And so, I mean, Chris, do you have any disagreement with that? I think we're all on board with that.
No, that was it. We've also been talking to the Karina HOA, and they've offered to send a letter in support and point out some issues that, you know, poke holes in some of the district's arguments.
And we may have, use them as witnesses of necessity during the hearings.
Just points out more and more, we get to check this stuff a lot closer than we have in the past with stuff.
Well, what's very frustrating is the, again, and I put it in, you know, in there too, is that, that they, that internal email where they made a determination of what rights we have without, the legal analysis by an engineer, sorry, Mr. Tinkle. It's kind of like an attorney making an engineering analysis, in my humble opinion.
Can we have, can we discuss a seat relocation?
So I would request an authorization to file the petition. I circulated the initial, the second draft today, substantially revised from the first draft, because I only became aware of this last Friday, and I was out of town for the weekend, so I've been scrambling since that time. But I appreciate everybody's assistance on it. And I'm asking for everybody's comments by noon tomorrow, and I would file it Monday.
For discussion purposes in the public, I'll make the motion that we authorize Tony to do it. We don't have a choice.
Could you be more specific of what you want?
Authorize the filing of a petition for a formal administrative hearing to challenge and the permit transfer to operating entity Karina Pelican Preserve, South Florida Water Management District, permit number 3600678-S-74, application number 130524-10.
Do I have a second?
I'll second if you could be Pete all that for me.
We'll write that down.
I will be, yeah, we'll write it down. I will give you the heading of it.
Have it for discussion.
And Madam Chairman, you may want to ask if any members of the public want to comment on this.
Blackmailed.
Open up for public comment. Is anyone wanting to make a comment on this motion?
I have a question. I live in Karina.
Mr. Schofield, you may want to register and...
Well, yeah, come up to the podium and tell us who you are.
Yeah, who are you?
I'm me. Joe Schofield, Karina resident. I'm not aware of what's happening in Karina. I think some of the property owners are the only ones that have been involved. But you mentioned a letter from the Karina HOA. What's the purpose of that?
Well, we don't have the letter yet. The, one of the assertions by Waldrup, or one of the assertions by South Florida Water Management District, and one of the assertions by WCI, was that we don't, we, the district, do not need to fall 20-foot lake maintenance easement along the flowway, because there is a 10-foot drainage easement along the rear of these various lots, I think lots 1 to 24, in favor of the Karina Property Owners Association. But if you look at, and I reviewed that, the dedication on the plat is for them to access their facilities in that 10-foot. And so I, that's what South Florida is saying, hey, you've got the easement. In my opinion, we do, we would not have that. The association would not have the ability to give us what we need.
And they have to go back and get consent from individual property owners.
From individual property owners.
And that would allow, we've, we've had this before.
Okay. So the easement is there for other purposes, not for working on the flowway?
In my opinion, it would not provide, it would not provide the district...
Limited use.
The legal right to utilize it. That's correct.
Okay. So the HOA will be sending a letter to...
All I know is that the HOA, one of the individuals has indicated to be cooperative to help the district out. And the letter may not be, we might, we need live testimony during the course of the proceedings. We'll work with them on that.
Okay. I'm not familiar enough.
I don't want to get into any more, but some more.
Just going back to 24 different lot owners and say, well, you consent to allow the CDD to use that 10-foot that is only dedicated to the HOA right now.
Right. We've had some communication and some talk in the community about it, but this is really moving forward now in a very serious manner. And I just thought I'd check on that. Thank you.
Mr.?
Nancy Hall, Pelican Preserve. This has been an ongoing issue for a significant amount of time. I don't think we're foreclosing any other options, including settlement, but we do need to go forward and do this, just to give ourselves the time. This is just one more thing that we've been fighting all along and not getting cooperation from the developer. So I think it's important to proceed. Thank you.
And also recognize that, you know, South Florida may reject it, saying we have no bait, I mean, just all kinds of things. Kitchen sink may be not status, so. But this preserves the opportunity to try to challenge it.
Madam Chairman, do you think that all we're going to be doing is poking the lion?
In my humble opinion, the lion's already growling and has eaten us a little bit. In my humble opinion, the lion has already been chewing on us.
Took a big bite.
Yeah, and I guess what, and again, the approach that they took, even on those systems that had significant issues that were brought to their attention when they would not budge, even on one of them, was very disconcerting, quite frankly. I understand their frustration, but it was very disconcerting. And to make this district transfer, become the operating entity of a system it didn't even accept yet, with deficiencies that they, they believe of of no import, is very frustrating.
Sometimes governmental agencies can be very frustrating, but to poke them and kick them often doesn't get you what you want.
You know, I understand. That's why I've been part of it. And once again, I don't know what the magnitude of the cost is on this. I don't know if it's a $10,000, $100,000 fix. I don't know. And Danny, is there any order of magnitude you can even estimate now to bring up the cubic yards of fill necessary to recreate the bank, lake bank? Because sometimes it's like, what, five feet into the lake maintenance easement?
Yeah, for the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. Now, as soon as you asked, we started working on it. I don't, I don't have an answer yet. I would be guessing at this point. I don't think it's going to be in the order of magnitude of hundreds or even 100,000. It could be in the order of magnitude of 50. I just don't know until, we've, we've gone across the lots, we've estimated the fill, so it's just we're working on that part of it now. So I'd be guessing.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to supervisor comments.
Thank you, members of the board.
Mr. Tinkle?
I'm sorry, I did hear you.
Supervisor.
Oh, you're that fast. Country Club Wells, just want to verify that we'll have a report next week on the, where we stand on those five wells and the, Forrest Main?
I had an engineer out there last week, and they're bringing a well drawer in, and I'm waiting for the schedule on that, to get a cost estimate to repair them and look at the pipeline.
Second thing is, we, I think, all got a copy of a deal, where are we at on finalizing the engineering contract?
I've supplied some draft comments to Tony. We're going to finalize those.
Do we respond back to those individually?
No. What I would suggest is that Chris and I worked on the form of the contract, and then I think we need to then bring it to the board as opposed to...
Yeah, I'd like to be involved in that, since that was my background. Because there's some things that have been said and written that I got a real problem with.
With the boards involved, then we have just a one-on-one communication or conversation.
Building option, we talked about that. Chris is going to do that. Storm sewer cleaning, just enough, where, where is Metower? I haven't seen, no hide nor hair of them.
They'll not be in Gateway Greens till next week.
Next week now? Okay. Okey-dokey. Flowway cleaning, we heard anything from Cal back to us on when we're going to have an answer?
Well, I'm meeting with him tomorrow, and he softened up a little bit and said they may look at cooperation. And my big thing is getting access in there for vehicles and trucks, no matter who cleans it out or pays for it.
They've had this thing for years with South Florida, so they should have, not even had, they should have this resolved.
Well, he said that, I think it was three years ago, he actually met with Scott Connell and Mr. Newbauer to look at the cost sharing and do some work there, and he was told that they weren't interested in cooperating with Colonial, so he...
Oh, they weren't interested?
No, no, Gateway was not interested.
That's right, because it's not in our responsibility.
Right. So they kind of backed off, and so I'll be out there tomorrow talking to him. And more importantly, the HOA is the one that controls that property next to that flowway. And we were, we're working on bid specs right now for the cleaning.
Okay. And then the last one was, you all had the meeting with South Florida Water Management District Friday. Just, I'm gathering that they told us what we were expecting to hear, that to do any improvement on our system, we have to have the hydraulic study.
Well, Danny, Danny phrased the question a few different ways. He might want to comment, but I think he got the same answer each way, the time he phrased the question, but...
Yeah, for the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. Yep, you pretty much, yeah, we, we asked about every way.
So we need to have you put together a proposal to get to us to start outlining the scope of the work to do that hydraulic study, because as soon as John gets those deals in here, I want to be able to be in a position to, not next year, because it's not going to happen, but not 2018 fall, 2019 fall, start doing whatever we have to do to modify these wears, make your 1 and 2 permanent, maybe look at lowering one of those wears, all those things, not the least of which is doing that hydraulic analysis, because I've given you the numbers now. When your engineer over there, RWA, did that study in 2014 of going under tree line, they did it at 247 CFS. The number's more like 400 CFS. It's a round peg in a square hole. Is it going to work? So we need to show South Florida. But I guess coming out of the meeting, and I'll put words in your mouth and you say if I'm wrong, they did give us permission for non-permitted, or for permitted stuff that wasn't done right, we do not need to make an application, which means we can go back and do immediate, well, whatever we can get in the water, to fix your wear and to fix the wear three that's 20 feet that was supposed to be 25 feet.
Yeah, if it's, if it is a maintenance item or something that wasn't built per permit and we're simply making it match that, and that would, that would actually go for Hampton. I don't know if Hampton wants to permanently lower that .43 feet. I think the, you know, the use of an adjustable wear would probably be better in their case, because they're built so much higher to begin with. But yeah, for the Stony Brook outfall, certainly that modification can be made without, in their opinion.
I think once we, we get into more discussion, so everybody knows what we're talking about that, that needs to be done. I really hesitate, as much as I'd love to go do it and cut that wear three to 25 feet. That's got some ramifications downstream on the low end of Pelican Preserve that I don't know if I'm ready to do. That's, that's biting the big bullet. You guys can't handle any more water. And that will give you more water. We got to figure out a way to get it out of your south end or west end before we start dumping more water down there. So that would be one, I probably want to hesitate on doing a correction.
I'll say, too, the sooner that the monitoring equipment can be installed, obviously, the better.
Oh, the better, because then we know what we've got, and we can back it up with facts.
Right.
So I think the big thing is, is to get you starting to put together the proposal for this hydraulic study. That's all I have, Marty.
Mr. Main?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout-out attaboy to Chris and Kenny and staff. We had an issue in Stony Brook, one of our vendors Comcast, who was running some fiber optic and breached a, breached a line. And Kenny, in speaking with him, Kenny had already, was aware that Comcast was going to be out, and he had already planned in the event of something happening based on maybe historical information. But that was just, it was good preparation and good planning. And I hate to say, you know, Kenny was right to plan that way, but it could have been worse. In talking with Kenny, if they would have hit a different line, we would have been swimming over there, so...
What'd they get?
8-inch.
8-inch what?
8-inch water.
Potable water?
Potable.
Yeah.
How could you get much worse? Oh, sewer.
Yeah.
Clean, dirty to clean.
The point is, one, that's good planning on the, on the behalf of staff. And I think, again, I keep trying to echo, and I think the board does too, this is the reason why staff is so important, and having accountability and policies and procedures and all these staff is so important and having accountability and policies and procedures and all these different things. It's, I mean, that, that could have been a disaster. The fact that Kenny was prepared. Now, again, you had to get some emergency people out there and, you know, someone's going to be writing a check for that. Hopefully it won't be us, but it could have been a lot worse. What, what was kind of main...
Lots of luck in getting it out.
What was, what was fixed in a matter of, you know, hours or at least contained could have been a huge issue. So, and so just thanks, Kenny, for, for looking out and Chris putting your staff in a position to be accountable for the business that they manage.
If I may add, when you get into Comcast, especially in areas like that, if they'll hit something and they can cover it up and leave, they will.
Every day of the week and twice on Sunday.
Especially when they go up in people's yards, because they'll hit their water lines or lateral and the people may not be there. Then we get the call because the service is bad and we're like, oh, sorry, your yard passed out. That's between you and Comcast. But we are going to have inspection services out there. We use the same folks we use for the gas line. We can attend it, but it's money well spent because you keep from having those issues. And they don't really mind because a lot of times they'll write the check for the damage. So yeah, but your staff isn't out there handing out boil water notices and the calls and taking samples to the lab and doing that. So...
No, they don't care.
They don't care. And if you aren't on top of them, so at the same time, we'll be watching out for what's not in the utility easement, the homeowners. But we'll be incurring some expense in there, but it'll be money well spent.
And, and I rode past and Terry was, what is it, what was he doing? What's it called?
He was putting flags.
Yeah, he's putting flag in the lines. Yeah, so Terry was locating and the guy was in an area that had not been located yet. So...
Just one block away.
A block away. I'm not kidding you.
You could see Terry from where they hit it.
Doesn't surprise me one iota.
But nice job, Kenny.
And I'll just have, I just want to say, they were out there. I left the clubhouse that particular evening after six o'clock and they were still there, monitoring the work. They were there all afternoon, literally.
Yeah, I'm done. That's all.
I want to go back one up. Has anybody heard anything from, I saw him out there waving and I don't know if that was what it was about, this school? Because what I'm hearing is the school is just going to flat ignore us and dump all that water into Hampton Park, not even considering coming this way at all. Has anybody heard or have we, what do we need to do to call for a meeting with the schools engineer, which is Johnson, and say, guys, you haven't got back to us, but from what I'm hearing is, you're ignoring us?
Yeah, we'll, I'll contact the school folks too, because Johnson works for them, so they won't talk to us unless we go from the people who hired them.
I think it'd be Mark, don't you, Mark? Yeah.
We, we need to follow, if we want to try to develop other alternatives to come other ways, we better do it before they've already got plans done and digging to go the other route. Because right now, Hampton Park people are monitoring that water and there is more water coming in to that twenty-four inch, not, not counting debris that's in their line that's coming through than it's going out of Hampton Park. That's not good. That's not good at all.
I'll call, call them. I'll have an update next meeting.
Okay.
Could you make sure that Lon Wardley is invited?
Sure.
I'm sorry, thanks.
Mr. Guy?
Madam Chairman, when Mr. Tinkell was talking about all of the wears and work that needed to be done, I was hoping that he would refresh our memory about the cleanup that needs to be done on the west side of I-75, but he didn't mention that, so I will.
Well, I thought at the last meeting, Hagan presented that report and three proposals, and I thought that we were going to be putting together some deal of how to handle that on budgeting.
Yeah, well, we're doing bid specs right now and I'm looking through the budget to pull the money together.
But that includes what Bill's talking about?
Well, we'll be cleaning those pipes and a lot of them are in pretty good shape, removing some of the vegetation that's in the way. Is that what you're referring to, cleaning those loads?
I don't think there are any, because I, when I was down there, there weren't any pipes. I was talking, you know, when you do...
He's talking the backside.
I-75 on the backside, on the west side, they had the rocks and the, and the tree and all of that business.
East side of West I-75.
Did I say it wrong?
Yes, east side, not west side. East side of I-75 plus the deal behind Pareto that needs to be dug out and then Margaret's Stony Brook discharge. Those three were the ones that were identified that we need to get pricing on.
I thought it was the west side of I-75.
Well, west side's got a problem, but the east side's where we got that deal with Cal. Well, I suppose the Cal Teague, you're right, west side had the deal that was in Hagan. The east side is the deal that we're trying to get Cal Teague to pick up the price tag for. You're right, you're right.
Or do you...
You are welcome. Mrs. Flaherty? Yes. I'm just going to do something out to Doug Banks, that the people really did appreciate you going door to door with the boil notice. And I got a feedback from that and I really appreciated that. I also appreciated the holes in the road so that I wasn't pumping up and down.
Speed, be a mission, I know.
I already thanked you for that.
That was for the deepest hole.
Speed signs, the speed radar sign, that's, that you put in Stony Brook. Already got a feedback that it's making a improvement, so I want to thank you for that. Okay, that's it. Just a thank you.
And I did not have anything. I was also going to thank Kenny. Unfortunately, what you may not know is the Comcast people backed over one of the irrigation boxes where they were staging the cable. And so Kenny was out there yesterday overseeing the replacement of the irrigation box.
But that was above ground?
Yeah, but it was, it was like a geyser, you know?
And one of the rates, so it's...
Vote should do adjourn.
We are officially adjourned at...
Five fourteen.
Five fourteen. Wow, this has got to be a record.